All right, you're good.
Okay, good evening. Calling this meeting to order at 7:01 PM on Tuesday, November 18th. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The flag is too minor. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. The first item on the agenda is being one anticipated adjourned to the executive session. Can I get a motion, please?
I move we adjourn to executive session to discuss information relating to ongoing or future criminal investigation or prosecution, information relating to proposed or pending current litigation, collective bargaining negotiations, the employment history of particular persons, personnel matters under employee records, and matters deemed confidential by state or federal law, including seeking advice from counsel.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, we're not in executive session, but now in executive session, we should be out around 8:00 PM sharp. Mr. Parker, we're good? Okay, it's 8:03 PM and we are back in public session. The first item on the agenda is our student voice, but before, actually, we'll do that in a minute. The student voice C1, and our first student is Ethan J. Kumar? Did I pronounce, Jack Kumar, did I pronounce your name correctly? Can you please correct me when you're on the mic, please? J. Kumar, can you get his mic, please, so we can hear him?
I got it.
Oh, well, thank you so much, sir. Nice to meet you. Did you have, did you have a comment for us? Can you repeat your name, please, for the mic?
It's Ethan J. Kumar.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. J. Kumar.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ethan and I'm a fifth grade student at RJ Bailey. Thank you for inviting me to share about my school. School has been really fun and less chaotic this year. My fourth grade year was a little bit chaotic because I was new to this school and it was my first time having so many different teachers and classes. But this year, it feels more calm and fun. School is great. I think that, I like that we're starting with the stuff that we already know, but with some twists in my core classes, math, science, LA, and social studies, and like, and that we're working toward learning harder stuff. I also like that my homework is not that hard this year. Also, I love the team teaching program because I don't have to memorize a schedule with four different teachers. I just have to know two main ones. Changing classes less means it's easier to keep track of all my stuff because I'm only going between two places for my core subjects. The teachers also seem to like the idea of only teaching two classes instead of four. And the drama club has also been really fun. This is my second year being in the drama club and the plays are really, are awesome. Usually, it fills up really fast and this, and this year in the play that we're doing, everyone gets to be a video game character. Another class I like is home and careers. We've been doing a lot of gardening and it's been fun. We've also been working on focus strategies such as doodling, using fidgets, and squeezing stress balls. These strategies have helped me a lot in school. The school leader has been, has been great so far. There are a lot of things I wanted to share, but these are just the highlights. I couldn't fit them all in my notes. In closing, the new school leader and the stuff that you, the board, and the principals, Ms. Rossi and Ms. Con are doing are really making Bailey a better place.
Thank you so much, sir. Mr. Parker, can you get the students to turn on?
Wait, there's one thing I want to share, too.
Okay.
The water fountains, like, throughout the school, some of them are, like, not working correctly, like, the water flow, like, when you're filling up the waters, either, like, jittery or slow, so can you fix that?
That's a great question. Dr. Chisholm, can you fix that? Thank you so much, sir.
You're welcome.
And our next, thank you, our next public speaker, we have Mr. Shane Alexander.
Good evening, Superintendent Chisholm and the Board of Education. My name is Shane Alexander. I'm a seventh grade student at Willits. The best thing about Willits is my main course classes because it teaches the main things you need in school. I would be happy if we were able to use our phones during lunch because the kids last year were able to. Finally, I would like to say the Lucha at Willits is better than the Lucha at RJ Bailey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. And the next item on our agenda are public comments, but we do have a comment for Dr. Chis, from Dr. Chisholm to respond to comments that were made in our last, oh, you're going to do that third report? Okay. So, I'm going to, this is too bad. I'm going to read our statement from the Public Participation at Board of Education meetings. What? It's, oh, it's so, yeah, but it's too, we don't hear this weekend. As we have an audience at our board meeting this evening, I think it would be helpful to outline our regular protocol and some basic rules with regard to comments from the public. While the law does not require that the board permit public comments at board meetings, this board has traditionally allowed and encouraged input from the public. However, we wish to remind all present that per Board Policy 1510, we require that all speakers adhere to the following protocols so as to allow everyone a fair opportunity to be heard and to allow for the efficient operation of the meeting. Initially, persons wishing to address the board must advise the President of the Board of Education or the District Clerk prior to the scheduled start of the meeting. The request is to be made in writing on a form provided by the District Clerk. Any group or organization wishing to address the Board of Education must identify a single spokesperson. Speakers will be permitted to speak for no longer than four minutes. Work sessions, speakers may comment on matters related to any agenda item. The Board of Education will not permit public comments involving specific district personnel or specific students. Any such information should be directed to the superintendent and will be addressed through all appropriate channels. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner, obscene language, scandalous statements, threats of violence, statements of advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. We will take all information under advisement for the board's consideration. In most cases, there will be no response from the board during a board meeting as to keep the meeting moving. Finally, when called upon, please state your name for the record before beginning your public comment. We appreciate everyone's cooperation. So, Dr. Chisholm has responses that she's going to state in her superintendence report.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, are there any, yes, there are public comments. We have three. First, from Lorraine Cantori, she has a question about costs and enrollments. So, did we say the Pledge of Allegiance today?
Yes.
We did.
We did.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a copy of the agenda?
What?
You have a copy of the agenda?
No.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Chisholm. Also, the school board, thank you for your service, for your volunteer service at countless hours of meetings. My name is Lorraine Cantori. I am part of Greenberg Action Alliance. This question was written by several community members in Greenberg Action Alliance. The 2000, wait, I'm sorry, 2025-26 Greenberg Central School District budget is about 85 million, which works out to roughly 50,000 per student. Statewide, New York District spent an average of about $35,000 per student. Parochial schools in our area typically charge around 8,000 to 18,000 per year, and independent private schools like Hackley or Rye Country Day charge about 50,000 to 60,000 in annual tuition while also providing scholarships. Given that context, what specific steps is the board considering to control costs for taxpayers while also improving educational outcomes for the Greenberg Central School District students? Has the board explored a formal reorganization plan, for example, taking advantage of reorganization incentive operating aid, which is RIOA, to consolidate with a neighboring district or advocating at the state level for some form of universal voucher for education savings account program? Now, this is my question. I did a FOIL last month. A FOIL is a Freedom of Information law that any one of the public can file to gather, gather information. It revealed in 2010, there were 346 students enrolled in Lee F. Jackson in grades K through 1. In 2025, there are 251 students that are enrolled in Lee F. Jackson, grades K through 1. There was a drop of 95 students over that 15-year period. This is approximately five classes. Is this data, most of the public doesn't know enough information to consider consolidating school buildings? And if not, why? I did ask for information about other grade levels because I really wanted to know the numbers. Kids leave for different reasons at different times, but I do have to say that 95 students leaving, you know, out of a total of, like, 355, that, that's, that's a big number. And I'm sorry, I do want to say that the two youngsters that came up to speak, I think they were absolutely wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Cantori. Next, we have Giovanna Ischiare.
Good evening. I'm here today just to hear the, the response, so for a follow-up. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Ms. Ramirez.
Good evening, dear members of the board, again. Hi. So, my name is Jasmine Ramirez, and I'm here today to thank you for your time and support. And basically, I'm here because on September 30th, I presented to the board my concerns about the soccer fields, but until today, no one has contacted me about any updates. As the mother of a student athlete who not only represents himself, but the school and community, it's important to let you know that I'm still have concerns about the conditions of the soccer fields. I know and I recognize that there are other projects and priorities on their, on your agenda that are very important to you, but the safety of the student, my son, and other students should come first. And it's not fair that the students who participate in the soccer program will continue to play on fields with these conditions. It's not just for them. Since you should agree with me that the fields are not in their best conditions, if you have a free moment, please give yourself the opportunity to walk around the fields and analyze their conditions. They speak for themselves. In the facility meeting on November 12th, I was quite disappointed about some comments. So, you shared that our fields are beating it up to the standards. Can we do better? Absolutely. Please take into account and consideration all the comments that the soccer athletes expressed during the last board meeting. They are the ones who play in the games. They are the ones who get hurt in case they suffer an incident during the game. They are the ones who experience the difficulties on the soccer fields. We are just spectators. The players express their comments to be heard because they are the ones who challenge the conditions on the fields. Reconstructing the fields, especially the field across from the parking lot, which is the one that is mostly used after the turf field, would provide a safe level and high-quality surface that supports not only the continued growth of the soccer program, but also the safety of all the students who use the field during recess or after-school activities. Thank you again, and I hope I can have a feedback, maybe sometime in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms., Ms. Fineda, there's no other comments or, or signed up? Okay. Thank you. Next on our agenda, our introduction of any new hires, are there any new hires? Then we have the Early Childhood Program and Lee F. Jackson Elementary presentation. And that's when I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ms. Simone and Mr. Washington.
Good evening, Board of Education trustees, central administration, parents, students, family members, and community members. Ms. Simone and I are here today to discuss the mission of the district. Well, what is the mission? Well, that's what we're here for, to talk about and how it applies to early education or elementary education. When I was walking into the building today, one of the students I saw named Aiden, he comes to me, "Mr. Washington, why are you here?" And I said to him, "Well, I'm here to practice my presentation." And I said to him, "You know, practice makes you better." And he did a little dance like this. "No, no, practice makes progress." And I'm thinking in my head, "Am I having productive student discourse right now?" So, today, we're going to learn about the vocabulary that the students have, the strategies that are being used, and we're going to learn words like smarty and smart. And one of the things, when I was looking at it, I was like, hmm, smart goals, smarty, what's, does that mean? Unfortunately, I ran across it going vertical, and then I was able to really commit it to memory. So, the S stands for specific and strategic. The M stands for measurable. The A stands for achievable. The R stands for reluctant. T stands for time-bound, and the I stands for inclusive, and the E stands for equitable. And so, I got to thinking, well, where did this come from? I remember seeing it back in school. Well, it came from Mr. George T. Doran in 1981. And I'm like, wow, I was 17 years old. The mathematicians on the desk right now have already figured it out, that being Mr. Warner and Ms. Dr. O. But I said, wow, that's when this came out. And we didn't apply it, we being the educators, until the 1990s and the early 2000s. So, when you see smart goals, just turn it around and then go down. You can memorize it that way. So, with that, my colleague is going to begin with the slide presentation. At the end, we will be able to do productive discourse when you have questions.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us present to you tonight, and thank you for visiting the Lee F. Jackson School. So, this slide here has to do with the district strategic plan goals, and under Dr. Chisholm's leadership, she brought in SOAR. So, we're going to show you how it aligns with the district strategic plan. So, we have goal number one, which does support student success. Goal number two, operational excellence. Goal number five, which has to do with attaining and retaining the teachers, and then three and four have to do with responsive relationships. So, our presentation tonight is going to be focused around the SOAR pillars and our school-building goals. You will see the alignment, the vertical alignment between ECP and Lee F. Jackson, and with our goals, the hope is that the students have a very smooth transition.
So, we're going to go back and forth.
And one of the things, again, when I saw the word SOAR, I said, hmm, what does that mean? Because I'm a person who has bad memory, so I need to be able to look at a word and know what it means. So, if you look at the S, it stands for safe, organized, accountable, and respectful. So, I said, well, what does that got to do with pre-K? And how am I going to apply that? Well, thank God for Google. So, I start Googling, I start researching, and I saw that the, one of the things under safe was gentle hands and walking feet, lining up and cleaning up for organized, trying their best in finishing classroom jobs, make, which is the accountable, and then the respectful, using kind words. Imagine if we soared in our daily lives at the grocery store and wherever we travel. That's what we'll be teaching the kids. And as you look on the chart, as Ms. Simone is going to show, you're going to see how the alignment goes from ECP straight to Lee F. Jackson.
So, when you're looking at both the ECP smarty goal and the Lee F. Jackson smarty goal, the common thread there is to embed productive student discourse throughout the end-of-year targets. You will see those words being repeated again, the productive student discourse and learning targets. So, this year, we're putting a lot of focus on having the teachers create learning targets so that will produce very rich student, productive student discourse. And the next slide, just going to give you a brief definition of what the two represent. So, the learning target, the learning target is the destination. That is where we want the students to be at the end of the, the lesson. We want to have them start off with an "I can" statement so they know what they're going to be learning at the end of the, the lesson. The discourse is the vehicle. So, that is where we are encouraging the student to make public thinking, turning and talking, and using those learning targets to really produce those strong productive discourses. I'll give you an example of a learning target for early childhood. "I can read a book by flipping pages from right to left." So, that is, they'll know that when they read, and I just made it up, that when they're reading, they're going to be turning the page from left to, what did I say?
Right to left.
Left to right, thank you. So, anyhow, having the, connecting the productive discourse and learning targets, before the lesson, we want to establish the learning targets. We spent a lot of time during Superintendent Conference Day, the teachers came together to create all of these learning targets. With that, the students are learning before the lesson what their, the end result is supposed to be and, and having that strong, rich conversation. And then after the discussion, we want to see, how did the students learn? How are we assessing if the students learn? And those are through learning tickets, check-ins, having the students present their thinking out loud. So, we did put in some pictures. ECP.
And if you go throughout, as you can see here, ECP is in three campuses. The ECP Hess, Highview Elementary School, for the audience. It's also at ECP Lee F. Jackson, the school within the school. And then we have ECP, the main campus. So, when you walk into the classrooms, you'll see "I can" statements, as was mentioned earlier. And so, that's one of the ways that you generate conversations with the students. I was thinking, what's the difference between a pre-K student and a kindergarten student? Let me say that again. What is the difference between a pre-K student and a kindergarten student? Then they gave me an example. A pre-K student colors inside the lines. A kindergarten student wants to know who made the lines. Well, I guess you didn't like that one. But I got to thinking, as they move along, so does their critical analysis and things of that nature. And so, as you see, as we go through productive discourse, you're going to see the five pillars, which will be in the board's emails in case we're talking too fast and you don't get the slide presentation. You'll see the different pillars and the different discourses that they learn in the ECP classroom.
So, in this slide, the top left, the students are, the teachers are looking at eye-ready data. The top mid, center is, they're looking at, they had created the learning targets and they're looking to see where they're going to be placing them in the room. To the right, those are the four subjects that they already had created, the learning targets. And the pictures below are the students, that, that's the productive discourse. They're turning, they're talking, they're having those rich conversations. So, the next pillar has to do with operational excellence. And again, you could see the alignment with ECP and Lee F. Jackson. Basically, we want to strengthen operational efficiencies by maintaining accurate, transparent systems for interventions, supports, evaluations, resource allocation, budget monitoring, ensuring all classrooms and instructional needs are met equitably. In addition to what I just read, one other component for ECP has to do with the universal pre-K grant and making sure that those documents are submitted to New York State on a timely fashion, so this way you could be awarded the grants. So, we just wanted to highlight some of the facilities projects that have taken place over the years. This is a picture of ECP where they put a new fence, and then an artist came, worked with the ECP students to create those beautiful recyclable bottle tops to make beautiful artwork. And then there's the other picture of the construction that's going on right now. At Lee F. Jackson, this was a project that took place last year where they had to put a gas pipe, and they had to go through the parking lot. So, you can see the pictures on top were during the project, the pictures on the bottom are now, and they enclosed the gas pipe, which is outside of the custodial office. Upcoming projects will be the roof here at Lee F. Jackson School for the summer, and I know that they're up, I'm sure there's going to be projects at ECP as well. Okay, attracting top talent. So, when I, when Mr. Washington and I were discussing this slide, we were looking at America, America has talent, so we were like, Greenberg has talent. Did you want to add anything here?
And again, we were talking about in the first slide, if you remember driving in during the daytime, you'll see the bottle cap artwork that's on the fence here. Well, I said, well, ECP can do that, and Ms. Simone said, great. She had 1,000 caps for me to, to take, so we took those and the students put them together and, and copied the work. Now, she only had to tell me that, like, 80 times before I picked them up, but that's how the artwork got onto the fence.
And you know I called the artist, too, to make the, to arrange the schedule. So, attracting top talent. So, how, how are we doing this? By June of 2026, the Early Childhood Program will have a instructional excellence, staff capacity through collaboration, feedback, recognizing systems that promote professional growth and retention, which is aligned to Lee F. Jackson goal, with, also, will be cultivating instructional excellence, staff staff capacity through collaboration, feedback, recognition system. So the key word there is the collaboration, professional development, having the teachers take ownership of their own professional development. Hosting in both, it's a district-wide initiative, hosting the guided visits, having peer visit, the peer visitation. And then the goal is also to have 100% of the teachers receive their observations and feedback in a timely fashion. All the staff participate in professional learning. And how we are monitoring that the learning targets and discourses taking place is through the learning walks. Actually, Dr. Chisholm had the opportunity today to do a couple of learning walks with me. And so did Ms. Cabell. Yesterday, Dr. Njoku and Dr. Faruki was here and went into different classrooms. So there's strong evidence of the learning targets and the discourse taking place. And, you know, I just feel very proud of what the students are able to really retain and then tell us what they're learning.
And just to go back a little bit, you might be thinking, well, when are you going to get all this time or this extra time to do all these things? And one of the things that I liked that Central did, and Dr. Ove and Dr. Chisholm, was that the process prior to them getting here was long and tedious to do an evaluation for the teachers. And they were able to truncate it to the state standards, which made it even quicker. So before, we would spend, at least me, like three to four hours on one observation. You know, now I can do it in one. So that gives us more time to do the 15 different weekly walkthroughs that we have.
And then under Dr. Njoku and Dr. Chisholm, we have our learning walks, the learning targets. These are, when we go in to do a real quick visit in the classroom, now we could just on our phone after we walk out, see what is the teacher doing? What is the room environment and the student behavior? So we could, I know that we're going to be collecting that data and then the administrators will be having conversations around the learning walks. So in addition to that, what are we doing? We have the guided visitations, peer classroom visitations. We have the teacher mentoring program, new teacher orientation, new teacher institute, teacher observation schedule, making sure everything is on a timely and that we're complying with the GTF contract. The MTSS Student Study Team, the multi-tier support system, making sure that we are analyzing data so we could support all students. Monthly shout-outs to staff. And then we have Spirit Week. We try to have holiday parties. And I know staff have gatherings such as going bowling. So we try to keep that, the morale and having the, you know, have the teachers feel like they're united and one family. Okay, this is the best part of my, to me, this is the best part, having responsive relationships. This is the fun part.
So responsive relationships look similar and then sometimes dissimilar in what transpires with the teachers, the students, the parents. And a lot of that is done through activities, which you will see or have seen on the pictures. Another thing that adds to that is the fact that our kids are doing similar things. For example, you have the Harvest Festival at the elementary and then you have the Halloween celebration, which I always say I find interesting. At four years old, they have the Harvest Festival. But at five-year-old, you can scare the kids. So I would find that very interesting. But those are similar things that the kids do and celebrate.
And of course, we want to build, strengthen that family and community partnership. And what's great about ECP and Lee F. Jackson is that we have ECP, Lee F. Jackson PTA. So a lot of those activities that are presented are the overarching PTA initiates and brings the families together. So there's not that distance, you know, in having them to transition from ECP to Lee F. Jackson because they already are making family connections and friends. We had a fantastic turnout for our, I'll show you a couple of pictures. Building relationships, we partner with the fire department. We also, there's a picture of the Harvest Walk. Down on the bottom left, Ms. Ayella, the social worker, she does parent universities. Is it weekly or monthly? And then you could see the, we, on Saturday, they have the Dad's Club. So there's some pictures of the fathers coming in to build those relationships with the young students. We had a fantastic turnout at Dad's Bring Your Child to School and, you know, Dad's or Dad's Figures. At Lee F. Jackson, there was 160 Dads that came. The bottom, pretty much in the center, you see a picture of the Back to School. We had 196 adults presented here at the Back to School to really see what's going on in the classrooms. We partner again with the fire department, Hoops for Heart, our PTA. And the one on the corner right is a picture of the Literacy Evening, which was pre-K through two, and we had a wonderful turnout again. And together, we make a difference in the life of every student soaring for a greater Greenberg. And that's it.
Thank you, Principal Washington and Principal Simone for that presentation.
Thank you. Trustees, are there any questions? Trustee Water.
Sure. You, you mentioned at the beginning, the kids at the ECP color inside the lines and the kids in kindergarten ask who drew the lines. So kids are learning questioning strategies. So how do you teach questioning strategies in ECP and in kindergarten?
It's embedded into the curriculum. That's where that strong productive student discourse comes. So the teachers are modeling the questions. So they're, they're doing a read aloud and they're questioning during the reading. And then they'll have the students turn and talk. Do you agree? Do you disagree? And the most important thing is they have to answer why. So that's where they're building that capacity with questioning.
I just happened to be yesterday in the classroom with Ms. Ayala and Ms. Spielberg. And they had the kids sitting around in a circle and they asked them, what did you do this weekend? And so they started talking about what they did during the weekend. And then kids would ask questions and then they would say, what do we do when we want to ask a question while we're in the circle? And so they learned to raise their hand and then wait their turn. So that questioning, as Mrs. Simone said, having them sit and talk about something that's in their prior knowledge makes it easy for them to learn these strategies and not know they're learning.
Beautiful, thank you.
Trustee, trustee Don.
Hi, I have two questions. First, the, talking about the talent, you mentioned a couple of things there and I wanted to confirm, did you say there are 15 weekly, hold on, 15 learning walks each week? Is that what I heard?
For the principal, you have, where you come in and sit in, we have a great app that we sit there and we observe the students and we use it. Yes, we have a great app that we use. There you go with that technology that we go in. It's, I believe it's 15, 10 to 15 or 15. Always remember the high note, highest number. And so it's easy, you know, to do when you think about it because you're walking through the classrooms constantly, especially for me at MC or here, the school within the school, and now over at ECP HES.
Okay, and this is part two of the same question.
Just going to add the goal.
Yeah, let me just add, part two of the same question that you answered. And then the backend of that is, I think you mentioned that there are peer walks.
Yes.
Where they're seeing peers, how often does that happen as well? So if you could...
So the goal for administrators are 15 to 20 visitations. So that would be like three or four a day. And peer visitations, what they've been doing is during their PLCs, they are meeting in different classrooms so they could look at the environment of each classroom. And then what we do is we'll schedule a teacher during their prep to go visit another teacher during their PLC. They'll talk about, you know, you're doing really great in this area. Can I come in and visit? We have a lot of new teachers visiting to see how foundations is being taught or our math program. And, and we do coordinate it. You know, I encourage them to coordinate it, you know, between themselves and a more veteran teacher.
And this question, my second question is, first of all, I think the ECP and LFJ PTA recently co-hosted with their schools a fantastic reading program. I can't believe the many thousands of minutes that were read. But that piggybacks on a question we had at the recent, yeah, another recent board meeting about the old reading dragon, is there a reading falcon? Is a similar program still in place to encourage reading on a required yet fun basis?
We don't have a reading falcon, but we do encourage reading every night. So that's something that I guess we're going to have to look at a costume. I do have a closet full of costumes. I just don't have a falcon one. We did have the dragon, but now that we changed to falcon, we did not. But, you know, that is, that's part of our literacy nights. That's why we have that fantastic district literacy is really to encourage all students looking at a falcon. Because we're soaring together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Long.
What am I, vice speaker? Sorry.
You woke us up.
Thank you for the presentation, it was very nice. My question is in regards to pillar four, the responsive relationships. I'm very happy to see measurable goals there. And so my question is specifically around the 50% of families will participate in events. So first, how are you kind of planning to measure that 50%? And then, given 167 dads showed up at Back to School Night, is it ambitious enough, 50%?
Well, we really had a fantastic turnout for those events. And 50%, because there are events that we don't get that participation. So, you know, for example, the literacy night. We planned for weeks and it was pre-K through two. And I think maybe 30 families came out. But we had the trunk or treat and we probably had 300 families come out. So it depends on the event. And when you, you want to take an average, you want to increase it by 50%. That's where the 50% was, even though it's moderate. We could always assess it and then increase it for the, you know, upcoming year. But I'd rather meet the goal than to fall short of the goal.
And it's interesting, when you do the math, as you said, we just had our first Dad's Day, the last one they had was 2017. And so the first day, the first time they held it, we had one person there. And we're like, well, this is depressing. And so we went back and we dug deep. And the next time, Mrs. Ayella, Mrs. Downs, and Mrs. Punter, Mrs. Rios, Mrs. Connie, and no, I'm forgetting somebody, they dug deep. And the next time, we had 14 fathers there. And then they didn't want to leave after the time was over with. So we sent pictures to the superintendent and our liaison. And you'll see them in the upcoming newsletter in September. But you grow, you grow where you are. So that had nothing the first time, 14, and they didn't want to leave that day. And that was this, this last Saturday, November 15.
And when you look at the 50%, 50% of the student enrollment, we have 240 students. So we would, we would love to have 120 adults participate. And I, I think that's a very ambitious number.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Simone and Mr. Washington. Any other questions, trustees? I will say, I would, I wanted to ask, I know I quickly mentioned earlier, but I wanted to ask about the students and the changes in the early education, elementary students since COVID and what the two of you have seen in that way. And then also, how are we, because we did hear from parents regarding curriculum. Homework was a topic, but also differentiation in the type of students that you have in a classroom, a teacher has, that they're dealing with students maybe at your level that are already reading, having difficulty reading or need supports around reading. How is that happening as well? So the effects of COVID and how that's playing out now and how the differentiation is happening in the classroom with regard to the curriculum and/or homework.
One of the great things for us is routine. I know in the high school and the upper grades, they have to do math recovery, reading recovery, those things. But for us, as soon as the kids come in, one of the blessings has been for the last four years, we were able to rebuild at ECP. When I got there, I hired eight teachers. You can go onto their Google site, website and see if you have, if you're a parent and if you're a board member or if you are, let's see, a family member who's been approved. They can see who their teacher is, what their teacher is about, besides meeting them. You know, we all love to read. And so that's one of the things that has helped us in recruiting. We went to, to bring in talent, which was one of the slides. We went to colleges, universities, and we asked, you know, friends and neighbors about anyone. The district put up signs. So we were able to, and since, what was it, 2022? Mr. Simone and I have been able to bring in 27 people at the latest counting. Only one left and that was due to having a child. So it takes time, but you bring in the right people, you start them with the kids. For example, the curriculum is Hagerty, Foundations, SEL, and Second Step and Stepping Stone, and then Creative Curriculum. And you have that curriculum as a routine. The kids come in and they go, no matter which classroom they're in, they usually go in and they look at their picture schedule so they can keep on track. They know the routine. And when they walk in the door at main campus, they have nothing but sight wards that they see when they come in. So they may not have learned yet, but they know what stop is. And if you walk down here on your way out, you'll see that it's the sign on the wall, stop for the kids who are still maybe using fonts and things of that nature. But there are what they call print rich throughout all the buildings.
So we, we have seen an increase of students' engagement, even as far as in the outdoors, in the playground, which they had to relearn how to interact. Building in those SEL lessons throughout the day have really encouraged the students as well. Having the productive discourse also encourages them to be respectful and to accept, you know, the different answers and then question why they would agree or disagree. So I do, you know, we do see that, the difference over the last few years of engagement. As far as the curriculum, differentiating in the curriculum, a few, well, quite a few years ago, we extended the school day because we, I know that that was something Central Office wanted, especially at the earlier level because the children were going home and it was a long day and they weren't, you know, they, they might not have had a family member to help them with the homework. So we extended the school day so they could learn and complete the tasks in school. There's basic homework that is given at this level. They might get a math sheet, they may have reading so many minutes per evening. But that, or they'll do projects. We have projects based, which also aligns with the IB as far as differentiating within the classroom. Within each program, there are support materials. So first, we had to assess the students to know what their reading level is. So first, we had to assess the students to know what their reading level is. And within the classroom, the teachers are differentiating because they're creating groups by their level. We did communicate through our progress report where the students are so the parents could reinforce that. And then we have our parent-teacher conference coming up in December. So those are the way that the teachers are differentiating.
So at the Lee F. Jackson age, they do break up into reading groups?
Absolutely, and math groups.
And math groups.
And when they're breaking up, when a teacher is working with a particular group, they're working in centers. So each center may have a variety of different levels that the students could, you know, pick a task that would be appropriate to their, their learning style and their level.
And lastly, I'm not going to ask anymore after this. The students with disabilities, have your classrooms increased?
So they, they have.
I mean, I mean, the numbers of.
The number of students.
Numbers of students, numbers of classrooms needed for students with disabilities.
They, they, this year it did increase. We have an additional two classrooms. And, you know, we're, we're really working very diligently to provide the staff with some professional development. Actually, Dr. Njoku had the pleasure of going into a special ed classroom yesterday, and those students were off the chart. The way they were answering those math questions, you, you would not know that that was a special ed classroom.
And the special education, some of the classrooms are not the same number of students in a class as the non-special education classrooms, correct?
They, it depends on the, the ratio. So we have the 812, then we have a 1212, then we have the integrated co-teach.
And so an 812 is eight students?
Eight students.
One teacher.
And then two teaching assistants.
Just three adults.
Three adults, and there may be additional adults if a child needs a one-to-one or a two-to-one aide.
And that's one classroom?
That's one classroom.
So it's a lot of resources for a classroom.
Correct, yes.
Has to increase, and you've seen students needing more supports coming in since COVID, right?
Yes.
And so that is, we don't have our finance folks here, but that is a district, it's a requirement from the law, a district expense, that we have to make sure that our students have what they need, especially at the earlier grades, to give those foundations so that they can grow and learn in a healthy way, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And so there's more students now that are coming in with.
There are more students and their profiles are a little, have been, you know, they've changed the profile of the students?
Their profiles have changed as well, okay. Thank you for clarifying.
And Dr. and Ms. Cabell was here today, and we went into classrooms, and she was really taking great observational notes to see what we have to provide the staff with some training. Because it, you can't just go into a classroom, even though they might have a one-to-one aide, that aide needs to know how to diffuse the situation. If a student get, have some of the, if, if some of the signals might, to avoid a child to having a crisis, to really pick up those signals, maybe take them on a walk before they start to, you know, act internally. Because their brains are, are working really fast.
Wonderful, okay. Thank you so much. I have to commend, commend the staff at the earlier grades as well because children are coming from all different places. Some are coming from home, some are coming from ECP or from pre-K with some level of formalized education and having to sit in a classroom style. But some kids are coming straight from home. Sometimes kids are coming from different environments and they all meet here. And then we have to figure out what supports are needed in place, right, to give them those foundations for learning. So I have to commend our teaching staff that work overtime with our students and the resources that we put into the, the students with disabilities and the early education for all students in general, to give them those foundations through Ms. Cabell, Dr. Njoku. So I really do appreciate that. And, you know, we get a lot of flack for our budget and how we utilize our budget. But there are requirements that we have to meet for all children. And so I think that's very important to say. So thank you.
I just wanted to add there, with the ECP, our numbers are pretty much fixed, where we cap out. But I, we have a waiting list of 14 students. And thank to, thanks to Dr. Ogatchi, Ogatchi or Njoko and her staff. Kim, Kim, made it easier for the first time, I believe, in seven years. We have participation with CBOs, which is for, once we fill up, then we go to other places. And we've had places like VV come and at least investigate the possibility of being a possible, a CBO person. Right now, we have at least four students or three students at the CBO level at Mrs. Lois Braun Center. And so we're working the list to see how many others, parents would want to put their kids in the CBO because we're full. If someone moves out, then we call from the list.
Thank you so much, Mr. Washington. And CBO is community-based organizations. So when our students are placed, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Chisholm, but when our students are placed in CBOs and even private schools, when people make the choice, not a good choice, but they make the choice to take their children and put them in private schools, if they need any sort of supports, accommodations, if they're a student with disability, we also provide and fund. As the home district, we are required to, thank you, Dr. Chisholm, supports for our students to make sure that every student that lives within the Fairview and Hartsdale borderline that are entitled for education here gets it. So I think that's super important as well for everyone to understand. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you again.
No further questions? Thank you, wonderful presentation.
Thank you both.
And trustees, Dr. Chisholm is going to make sure that we get a copy of that presentation in our packet as well. Next item up for the agenda is a policy presentation. I'm going to turn the meeting over to my vice president, trustee Valen.
Okay, we are presenting five policies to the public today. These will be, the policies are 3220, use of assistant animal, excuse me, use of assistance animals, 5140, administration of the budget, 5410, purchasing, 5411, procurement of goods and services, and 8250, animals in the school for instructional purposes. These will be considered for board adoption at the December 16, 2025 meeting. Copies, whoa, my goodness today. Copies of these policies are available in the district clerk's office or as an attachment to this agenda, to this agenda on board docs and at the school buildings. All comments concerning the policies should be submitted in writing to the Board of Education at board@greenbergcsd.org. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Valen. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the policies that trustee Valen listed? Hearing none, yes, trustee Warner?
Yeah, policy 50, I believe it's 5411, procurement of goods and services. There's a sentence that's, that reads, "All purchasing is to be done by the purchasing agent on an official blanket purchase order." I'm not sure if, if, if all purchasing would be done on a blanket purchase order or not.
5411 is actually having, there are a few questions about this policy that we're researching. That is actually one of them. So thank you for that. It will either retain the current wording of, the original wording of official purchase order blank, but there's also a question as to whether that's allowed or not. So we're researching that. We're also looking into the bid bond requirements, the purchasing bond requirements, and whether or not to add payment bond requirements. So this policy has a good chance of being edited before its backup for board approval. If the policy is edited based on either public comments or the continuing research, that edited policy will be put on the, the policies presented to the public. It will be immediately released once our district clerk makes those edits. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, trustee Valen. Next on our agenda is, sorry, get too fast. Exif, yes, is there another comment? No. Next on our agenda is ex-official board of education member report. Our ex-official members are not here. Board president report, I'm going to keep it brief for the purpose of time. This Thursday, November 20th is National Parent Involvement Day. Yay, we've heard from, many parents are here on the board, but we've also heard from several parents with excitement to go into the schools, to be involved in the schools on National Parent Involvement Day. So please come out if you can. November 27th is Thanksgiving. Please also enjoy that time with family or friends or coworkers and really take some time to spend time with one another and focus on what matters. Next, I'm going to turn over to the superintendent of schools for her report. Thank you.
Thank you, President Mears. First, I just wanted to share with the community that our, we held our first. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. First, I wanted to share with the community that we held our first superintendent student advisory council meeting last week, Thursday. We have about 13 students who are currently serving on the council this year. 12 of those 13 attended the first meeting. As a council, we have identified the top items for the 25, 26 school year. One of those items are around the procedures for cell phones in the school, thinking about storage, you know, how to incorporate that into the code of conduct, those type things. The second item was around junior, senior privileges, with juniors and seniors only being allowed to leave the campus. And what does that look like? The third one was really, the third and fourth one are really the student-driven ones around attendance issues with students on field trips and during assemblies. And some other items that were discussed was like sixth grade lunch period being too early, those type things, wanting some choice at the, at the RJ Bailey, like the high school kids have a choice for lunch. So those are some things that the students really talked about. It was a really good mix of students from fifth grade to 11th grade, and it was really nice to see their interactions with some of the older kids, almost serving as mentors and engaging the younger students in conversations. You know, we did post about it today around the superintendent's student advisory council. And just really the fact that even the, the elementary students are making decisions that may impact them in the next, you know, one to three years. So it was really great to see that interaction. I did just recently launch the superintendent monthly newsletter as well as the Falcons Journey, so please be on the lookout for that. That is going to go out monthly around the four pillars. This first monthly newsletter did include my four sore goals as a superintendent. That's my accountability and that's my transparency around the work for year one. So I encourage everybody to read that. We are excited about the Falcons Journey. We started with Ms. Weiss. I won't share the next up, it'll be a nice surprise. But they're all alumni who now work in the district and have, almost like Disney World, welcome home type theme. So we're really excited to continue to launch those things. We still are collecting food donations at every one of the five schools across the district. Those bins are filling up. Last week, during a parent-teacher conference, we were giving away bags at the middle high school. If you or someone you know in your community is in need of food, especially around this holiday season, please encourage them to stop by any one of the five schools in the district. There's plenty of food to, you know, non-perishable items, even some toiletries in our district office for families that might be in need at the holiday season. And then, last but not least, there were questions posed around soccer. And the questions specifically were, how did the director of facilities tell the community member that they were working on something when there's no record of it regarding the, and that's in regards to the tennis track and football field? The second question is, if you can make these renovations, why can't you? For the soccer program? And then the third question is, how can you make one team happy but not the other one? So in response to those questions specifically, I do want to thank every community member, even the students. And I will say, one of the students on the advisory council is a soccer student, so we talked about these issues too. So there's advocacy from the students as well. But I understand that our, our community does care deeply about ensuring fairness and transparency in how we prioritize, specifically facility improvements and support all of our athletic programs. I cannot speak for how someone made a decision or conversations that were had prior to my tenure here, especially with folks that may not still be in the district. But what I will say is, in particular, that I do wish to address the communication about ongoing work. I want to clarify that our director of facilities and our staff often discuss potential projects as part of a long-term planning. However, until those projects are formally approved and funded by the Board of Education, they may not yet appear in the district's official records. My knowledge of this could sometimes create confusion, and we are working to improve how we communicate project stages and planning timeliness with the community. In this case, while we did consult with facilities committee as part of the review, we recognized that not all individuals who needed to be informed maybe weren't kept up to date. What I will say is that we are revisiting our communication protocols to ensure that all parties understand their role and that the information is clearly articulated across the district. As for the tennis course, track, and football field renovations, these projects were prioritized because of safety, compliance, and facility condition assessments conducted over time. Each of those projects that were shared, including the soccer field, goes through a review process that includes a need, cost, and available funding, particularly when capital funds or bond allocations are restricted for specific uses. Our goal is never to favor any one program over another. Our goal is really to ensure that every athletic program and facility supports student safety, access, and excellence. Something that was shared at the last facilities committee was the fact that everybody keeps referring to it as the football field when it's just the turf field. It is lined for soccer. The students just didn't have an opportunity to play on this field at all. I also want to share that one of the concerns that came up was the garbage and debris on that soccer field. If you've been there recently, you'll notice that there are garbage cans out there. That was something that was an immediate thing that we could immediately address, and they, that has been addressed. We're also looking at ways of addressing even on the weekends, and I've even come up here to see people that are not authorized to use our facilities, using the facilities at late at night, and that leads to the debris too. New goals have been provided. There was a question around scoreboards. There is a portable digital scoreboard that is available. We just need to use it. And about a depression in the baseball field near the first base will be addressed by adding more clay instead of installing a drain. So there are some quotes that are being taken around the soccer fields, such as fencing, netting, artificial turf, kind of looking at that or building it up. So those are things that are still being discussed in the facilities. I also want to say that we do value the passion and advocacy from all corners of our athletic community. I did share that we do have a student that's serving on that council. I do also want to invite Ms. Ramirez and Giovanna, I'm sorry, Ms. Giovanna, I don't know your last name. But Mr. McCoy and I would like to invite you into a forum meeting with us because now I can have context into, in terms of what meeting was held and the conversations that are taking place. So we'd like to schedule that with the both of you, either before or right after the Thanksgiving holiday. So I know that probably does not answer your question, but again, I can't speak, I can't speak for the conversations that I was not privy to. So, yeah.
Okay, so I guess the track and the field, the new track and field, Dr. Chisholm, won't be open until.
The spring.
Uh, after the spring, I guess. May something, they said, really? So it's kind of the end of the school year. So I guess for the fall season 2026, there'll have to be some sort of planning. I guess when you guys have your meeting, you'll talk more, but there'll have to be some sort of planning for scheduling between football and soccer.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
At new turf field. And, okay, well, I look forward to hearing about the meeting and whatever happens at that meeting and what, what could come of it. Any other questions, comments? No, okay, we're going to move on. To the assistant superintendent for curriculum, that's Dr. Chisholm?
No.
I'm sorry, Dr. Njoko.
Not anymore.
That's okay, she can, she can. All right, good evening, everyone. So I am passing along just a visual, just to aid in the conversation. This is a great opportunity, especially given that Lee F. Jackson and ECP presented their school plans. So as shared by both Ms. Simone and Mr. Washington, this year, our district is sharpening its focus on productive student discourse. In the past, it was student discourse, but we've added the word productive student discourse, and I want to just clarify what that is. It is, it is the core instructional focus. It's aligned to IB approaches to learning, as well as the New York State Portrait of a Graduate. If you think about just the. Graduate. If you think about just this idea of conversation and what's written and what's spoken. So productive student discourse, whether spoken or written, it's purposeful. So that productive part is about it being purposeful, rigorous, aligned to a standard, and it strengthens students' ability to clearly articulate their thinking at all across the grade levels, engage in academic conversation, academic conversation, justify reasoning using evidence, reflect on and build upon their peer ideas. So these, this is what we are focusing on, and the visual that everyone has in front of them is a triangle that has curriculum instruction assessment, what's written, taught, and tested, with instructional focus in terms of what's taught, being productive student discourse. And just going further with that, there might be a question of, you know, how do we support productive student discourse? How are we doing that? This year, we came in with focusing on creating enabling conditions in the classroom. So Ms. Simone and Mr. Washington spoke about the teacher moves, student behaviors, the room. So in terms of teacher moves, how do we get the students to engage in that? We are speaking about learning targets that they had focused on, and what are learning targets? To ensure that the students and the teachers both understand what is being taught for that day, not for the week, but for that day, and every single piece of talk and writing is around that. And then that's understanding what success looks like. So in the conversation, it's not just discourse that's happening, because students can have great conversation, but if it's not focused on the point of the lesson of that target, then it's not productive, which is why we are speaking about productive student discourse. What are other enabling conditions? Questioning. So really thinking about the questions we're asking, and also, I think, as mentioned before, I think Trustee Warner stated this, in terms of teaching the students how to question. So during our last PLC-LT, because those are one of the structures we have in place, we have teams of teacher leaders coming together, we actually brought in professional learning through our ARBURN, which is the regional BOCs, to look at how teachers and how we can think about questioning for specific vulnerable groups like our English language learners. So if we look at how we can question around these levels, question for these students across their levels, then imagine what we're doing for all students, right? So that came out, and I think I shared in one of the reports, the responses from the teachers were tremendously positive and just requesting to expand it to everyone. So we're gonna keep going with this. This is not just for this year. This is really focused work. So I just spoke about learning targets, teacher moves, questioning, and then also exit tickets. So you're thinking about the beginning of the lesson, during the lesson, at the end of the lesson, really thinking about how are we fostering orchestrating conditions that students are talking and writing around the content for that day. We're, as I said, we're leveraging existing structures, because you work with what you have. What we have is, we have our Superintendent's Conference Days, we have already existing structures of our professional learning community, team meetings, we have administrators' meetings, we have school-based PLCs, we have guided classroom visits. All of these are existing structures, and what we're doing is creating coherence and alignment to ensure that this is focused on in every point, and it's just clearly moving towards, as we said, the IB profile, as well as the Portrait of a Graduate. So connecting everything. And it's also being connected to the, to the thinking and the framing around when principals are going for learning walks, as well as observations. So I want to, I get excited about this, so I'm trying to, you know, pause myself. But for example, I, I think Ms. Simone stated that, came for a visit yesterday, and I wanted to speak about the special education classroom that I went into that she mentioned. I visited other classrooms, but this was really unique because she was correct. You wouldn't know it was a special, quote-unquote, "special education" classroom. And I don't know what people are expecting with that, but it should be a classroom. Any classroom is a classroom where learning is happening, and productive student discourse can happen in any space. You just need to understand your students and ensure that they understand what's happening, and that is what was happening in the classroom. Students were talking about mathematics. They were looking at images of problems and being able to, in their small, in their, on the carpet, they were, they were having conversations with each other and the teacher around the differences and similarities of the, of those numbers. And what that was doing is they were looking, they were pretty much identifying equations, because some of them had equal signs, some of them did not. They were looking at patterns to see, you know, families of making tens. They were, it was just, there was a lot of conversation, and these are young people in grade one. So it was very good conversation, and they were, it was just impressive. So I will, I will stop there with productive student discourse and take a look at the other items that are on this triangle. One is the curriculum focus, the other is the curriculum focus. So just communicating that this year, we are looking at curriculum development and refinement, but specifically looking at the five-year, looking at a five-year curriculum review. There was a lot of conversations last year, but really honing in on the content areas that we want to focus on. So that will be coming forward in a more formal manner, as well as grade level expectations. Then we have assessments. Last year, we started the work of standard spaced report card implementation. We'll speak more about that during the Education Committee meeting on Thursday. And I, we invite, and I'm sure Trustee Val would mention, will mention this, we invite everyone to come out on Thursday, because there's quite a bit of work and conversation that happens. And finally, I'm looking forward to formally sharing progress on these different, these varied items in an upcoming board meeting.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Njoku. Any questions, trustees? I feel like I talk a lot, because I have a bunch of things. But I see you moving, Trustee Val. Do you want to say something?
No, I'll just state that the Education Committee meeting that Dr. Njoku referenced is this Thursday at 7:00 PM at the Willens Middle High School Innovation Lab.
So, Dr. Njoku, you mentioned existing structures, coherence and alignment, IB profile, Portrait of a Graduate. One of the things that comes to mind for me is our language program. And I know we do Mandarin very young, but we start Spanish in grade four, I believe, but since I'm on my third child in elementary now. The Spanish instruction from grades four through eight are concerning to me as a parent, as well as a board member. And I've heard from other parents with concerns about the strength of that program. And I have asked questions in multiple settings around the Spanish instruction and the measurement for that. And I understand there's not, I guess, a measurement other than a checkpoint one at the end of grade eight, I believe. And then the kids go into ninth grade with varying levels of fluency or, or training in the language of Spanish. I did hear from a community member who is quite strong in their view about our district, because we're, the community member's words, this is not fact, but the community member said we're 46% Hispanic or Latino. I don't know the numbers. I don't know if anyone has the most recent information. But it does concern me as a board member if we have a large percentage, whatever the number exactly is, of Hispanic and Latino families by culture, and we don't have a stronger foundation for the Spanish language. And our instruction, at least in Mandarin, is not just the words of a language, it's the culture and the understanding. And so if a large part of our community in the schools are of a particular culture, and we're not doing better instruction in that culture, at least until ninth grade, I do have a little concern. But maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's my experience is not, is not the fact. But I hope Dr. Njoku and Dr. Chisholm, since you're here, you guys can look into that. Then the question that I have is around our bilingual program and where we are with that, because if we do have a large amount of families that are Hispanic-Latino, and I know we had talked about it before, but I'm not quite sure exactly where we are with our bilingual program. And so if you could maybe tell us about that. Thank you.
All right. So the first part of your, the first part of your question around languages, that's part, that is, that is the reason why we have to create a five-year review cycle, to look at the different content areas. So that would, that encompasses science of implementation, where you have to, you know, take, explore, do an audit, consider what the installation of, you know, all the readiness components, and then you have initial implementation, which incorporates a pilot. So all of that needs to be mapped out. And I think where we are right now is coming, making the decisions about what we're doing first, because all content area can't be looked at in one year. You have to, you have to balance it out. And I think being transparent with the public, with the board, around where we are is what I'm trying to create in this five-year review cycle, because that's important. So people know, okay, it's coming, it's not. So being able to balance that and then communicate the status. The second part around the dual language program is part of like bilingual education. We had, last year coming in, we had initially thought we were at a specific place with it, and we were moving from the place that was initially communicated, finding that we were not at that place. We were not at the place to begin in the 25-26 school year. We still require formalizing. So we have hired, as we know, Dr. Faruki, who we are in process, where we've completed the initial survey for parents, generating a committee, working with, again, the ARBURN, because we have a strong relationship, I'm sorry, but strong relationship with the ARBURN to ensure that we are in that process of, because it's not, again, it's, if we were where we initially thought we were, we would, things would be different. But now we have to work from start. We need to be clear of where we are in terms of looking at our numbers. There's a specific, there has to be 20 is the number of students within a grade that speak that particular language to have a program. And then there's different types of programs. So that requires conversation with the community and the school staff. And that hasn't, that didn't fully happen. So you can't just bring something in. And there's also, like, looking at curriculum, you know, budgeting it, and it's not a one-year process. You can't have a budget just for next year. It has to be a five to six year, because some programs are gradually, gradually scale up. And that's a cost to the district. So that needs to be mapped out clearly. So I'm answering your question in that, we are in the process of, we have a timeline of activities. Dr. Faruki is also going to be presenting at one of our Education Committee meetings in January, thank you, to communicate the status.
Okay, so right now, we're not having a bilingual
Right now, we're not having, right now, we have an ENL program, which is successful, I would say. But given our numbers, we might have to be considering a type of bilingual education program. And there are different types.
Okay.
And ENL is considered technically a type of bilingual. What you're, what we're talking about specifically is dual language. It will require an audit, not just of thinking about our, the number of students, where they are on the scale in terms of the nicest scores, whether they're entering, or if they're commanding and expanding, kind of looking at those numbers too. But it's also going to require audit of students who may be dual, you know, classified or twice exceptional, those students with disabilities, but are also Ls, because now you'd have to hire special related services to service those students. So there's a lot of things that go into it, including deciding which level or which type of dual language, if we're going to be 50-50, 70-30, how much of the curriculum is going to be delivered in all Spanish, and then finding teachers who are certified to deliver that. So there is, it is a, about, I'll be honest, it took us three years. It's about a three-year progress.
And, just for those who are concerned about the budget, this is a requirement, if, if the numbers are at the levels that you're saying, it is a requirement that the district, from New York State Education Department, it is a requirement that the district do this or some sort of program
Yes, identify.
If our numbers meet the, okay, so I think that's important also to note about our budget.
Right.
So it's not just simple math.
It's not simple math, you have to decide.
This is our budget, and this is the amount of students.
Right.
We have many, many things that go into where the money has to go. Okay. So, last question is around our, we did hear from a parent regarding, and Trustee Valan asked this today, earlier today, about the reading dragon and the focus on early literacy for students, as well as homework. And you have here about the five-year curriculum review. So, listen, this is not my profession. You guys have doctorate degrees in education, so forgive me, I'm simply a parent. But as a parent, and hearing from parents, I know parents want to see something, some change within the time that their kid is in the school, right? So five years actually is quite a long time. Your kid can go from Jackson to Bailey, or from Ivy U to Woodlands in that time. And you may never see whatever change you're speaking up about at that grade level. So, you know, as a board, I think we're concerned about retention, right? Family retention, student retention. And being that a lot of these concepts take a long time to review, are there quick wins? I know with the soccer field, like you said, you put the bins out there, you talk to the athletic director to make sure there is a scoreboard. So there were some quick wins, as well as when you redid the field, or when we redid the field, the lines are there. So there are some things that
Yes.
can easily be looked at quickly. With regard to curriculum, reading, type of reading dragon, homework review, are there things that parents can have tangible and get a hold of while their children are in the school to help them to stay in our school district?
Well, I would first like, I want to say that there are things already existing that, so one of the, one of the amazing things that I've seen is even just with the Summer Night of Fun, when we launch the reading programs for the summer. But I do understand, I've heard about the reading dragon. I didn't realize that it was previously a dragon. I thought, well, anyway, what I thought. But now we're Falcons. The, we have had conversations. I'm, I have to be careful about sharing ideas now, but we have had conversations, I've had conversations with, clearly with Dr. Chisholm, but also with our instructional coach and, and some, you know, some parents. I have had conversation with some parents, and I've had conversation with leaders. There are ideas. It's really important whenever there's a plan, I want to be careful about ensuring that the voices of the, of the people who are going to actually be implementing it are present, and that the plan is in place and that we make clear. But there are quick wins we are looking at now. And what I would say with the five-year review, it's that we're focusing on a content area. So they will see evidence within that year, but for a content area, you know, so making that clear. And there was something else. And then also, there is something that I placed in front of you. It's grade level expectations, which is a quick win that I've had conversation with Dr. Chisholm about, that makes clear, and I, and speaking with a parent, they actually said that would be very helpful to just have an idea very clear, because parents are not going to go on the state side and read the entire stand, all the standards, but just understanding that. Also, the conversation that we're going to have during the Education Committee about the standard-based report card, also another win, so that you could look at the report card and understand it a little better. That is what teachers are working on right now, right? So they're actually using PLCs to just review it based on the work that we did last year.
Thank you, Dr. Njoku.
Oh, you're welcome.
Sorry, Trustee Jacobson.
I guess this is, I don't know if you're the right person to ask this, but since we're talking about parent engagement and involvement with, and we're not doing liaison reports tonight. So with Parent Involvement Day being Thursday, as a parent, I'm seeing mixed kind of information from the schools. Is, do you happen to know, is there anything happening at Woodlands, the middle or the high school, for Parent Involvement Day? And for, I do know that there are some schools that have pre-registration links out there, so I encourage everyone to pre-register if you're going into the schools. But I could not find information about Woodlands, and I didn't know if you had that.
I can look into that for you.
Okay.
And then if necessary, I'm sure a communication will go out through And then i- if necessary, I'm sure a communication will go out through the building, so parents are aware.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's move on. Our next item on the agenda is, thank you, Dr. Injoku, Treasury Reports, and Dr. Chisholm's going to step in, as our business officials are not here in person.
Yes, they are actually at a school business training, so. On behalf of Amy Ashley Moore, District Treasurer, I will be providing the September 2025 Treasurer's Report. Please note that the September 2025 General Fund Other Receipts of $361,940.19 includes $850 in damaged Chromebook fees, $3,201.67, and $357,888.52 in miscellaneous items. As detailed in the Treasurer's Report for September 2025, the ending bank balances for the General Fund as of 9:30 25 are cash accounts checking, $1,531,517.17. Investments or money markets, $15,016, excuse me, $15,661,274.54, for a total of $17,192,791.71. The General Fund Beginning Balance for September 2025 was $20,491,424.38. The district received a total of $2,488,788, excuse me, $2,488,788.12 in receipts, issued $3,428,731.82 in bankroll checks, $2,284,632.97 in accounts payable disbursements, and $74,056 in due to, due from other funds. The ending balance for the General Fund was $17,192,791.71, as detailed above. For the month of September 2025, the district issued 922 payroll checks and 191 accounts payable disbursements. The claim auditor audited all disbursements. That concludes the September 2025 Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Chisholm. That's a tongue twister. Any questions at all about their report, even though we would have to take it back to get answers? Any questions from trustees? No? Next on the item is Board Discussion. Is there any discussions that the board needs to work through? I listed several options that we've been either, you know, having informal conversations about or been approached about. One of the things was iReady availability for students after 3:30 PM. I did get clarity on that, that we do have availability for iReady after 3:30. We just talked about the bilingual program. Another thing, did you have something to say?
I was going to say, I would possibly go to a second executive.
You surely can. Do you, do you want to go ahead?
I don't know if you're going to continue going down.
I was just going to read the list, but if you'd like to make a motion.
I move that we adjourn to a second executive session to discuss, okay, collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to, pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, employment history of particular persons, personnel matters, and/or employee records, and matters deemed confidential by state or federal law, including seeking advice from counsel.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion hearing? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We're now in executive session, it's 9:37 PM.
Yes, ma'am.
Parker, are we ready? Huh? Ready to go? Ten, okay, guys.
That's huh.
No more side conversations? Okay. I did the seating purposely, okay. It is 10:48, 9, 10:49 PM, and we're back in public session. First item on the agenda, F1 Personnel Instructional Items. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we have F2 Personnel Non-Instructional Items.
I move that we approve the non-instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item F3 Board Action Items.
I move that we approve the Board Action Items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we have F4 Finance Items, and I understand there is a modification.
I move that we approve the Finance Items presented to the board for approval this evening, with the exception of J2.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item F5 Pupil Personnel Services Items.
I move that we approve the Pupil Personnel Services Items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda, our closing items. Item L, L1 New Business. Is there any new business? Hearing none? All those in favor? Oh.
All those in favor of what?
Closing item, I'm sorry. Are there any closing items?
Oh, my goodness.
No? Next on the agenda is adjournment. Can I get a motion?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? No? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. 10:51. Good night.
Good night.